Perfect, thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order, the zoning board of appeals, city of Manona, Thursday, July 21, 2022. Obviously Doug, you have the role, so we're good.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from May 19, 2022?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any changes, corrections, additions to the minutes from the 19th of May? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. We'll move to number five, public hearing by Tom and Mary Kay Zimbrick, 5011, Tony Watts the Trail, requesting variance in from the Manona Municipal Code of Ordinances, section 480, 24D, 7C, for accessory building in the shore yard, and section 480, 24D, 7D, accessory building and structures lot coverage to increase the maximum lot coverage of the accessory structures in order to build a seasonal removable pier and a permanent in-ground pool within the shore yard, case number Z-005-2022. Would you, first up with this public hearing, is to go ahead and present what you'd like to present about your application?
Okay, I could just make a few comments, then I'll turn the presentation over to John Wanta, our builder from Aldo, and Justin Resenowski, our architect. Again, I'm Tom Zimbrick. My wife and I bought a house on Taniwatha. It's been a lifelong dream of ours to live on the lake. Finally found a piece of property, grew up in Madison, and this will be our forever home. And part of that forever home is to utilize the property and make it very handicap accessible with the different grains and elevators and lifts and things like that. So it's really asking for variances to accommodate the property and the accessibility. So at that point, I'll turn it over to John Wanta and Justin to discuss the proposal for the variances.
Guys, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Justin Race and I'm the project architects. How do you guys recommend we do this? Should we go through the letter that we put together? Or do you want me to just give you a little summary?
Sure, if you could give a little summary, and you know, if you if you want to share anything on the screen, Doug could certainly turn the screen over to host or put your application drawings up on the screen if you want to, but otherwise I would say give an overview and specific to, you know, the elements that we by statute have to
Sure.
have to address. You know, this being an area variance, which is to say the issue of hardship, the unique physical property limitations and the public interest.
Okay, yeah, sounds good. So that's really, you know, we're we're doing sort of a two-part project here. The first part of this project is really kind of what we're talking about here, which is introduction of a new boathouse, a replacement of an existing in-ground swimming pool, and then an introduction of a new pier to the property. And the way that we've understood it really is we're not conforming in two ways. And Doug, you know, please correct me if I'm wrong here, but the first way would be the the accessory building square footage where we would be over with those three structures. And then secondly, in terms of the the swimming pool, and Doug, is it the pier as well that we're within the shoreline setback, and that's what the other issue is?
Just the pool.
Just the pool, okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
So those were, you know, the two items that we need a variance on. Going back to Tom's point, it's really, it really comes down to very challenging site conditions with the slope involved in getting a basically setting up a safe path from the house down to the lake. So to do this, we'll start out with the swimming pool. Right now, there is an existing swimming pool from 1960 something that is beyond its usable life, so it needs to be replaced. The issue with the location that it's in right now is that it's too close to the house, so creates pinch points. And it's, in terms of wheelchair access, it's really dangerous situation. So we're trying to alleviate that by pushing the pool further back from the house, and unfortunately that puts us into the shoreline setback. In terms of the pier itself, you know, we're introducing a boathouse that would be 1,000 square feet that would accommodate two boats. Certainly, we would want a pier to be able to use that sufficiently. And then the the third part of this accessibility issue is the pool house, or the boathouse that we have designed will have a lift for a wheelchair that will bring us down to the new pier. The one, you know, the one other thing I'd like to point out is in looking through the meeting minutes of prior variance meetings with similar situations here, I'm seeing a pattern that people are asking that an in-ground swimming pool, which is entirely below ground, as well as a pier, that the, you know, questionable whether that would be considered a building itself. So if from our standpoint, we're really minimally affecting the view and any other psych concerns that we would have just from the nature that these structures are basically on the ground or below ground, the pier itself would be a, in my mind, a permeable, 100% permeable structure, because that is going to drain directly into the lake. So if you guys want to fast forward and look at the drawings, I guess that would probably be the next step. Unless you have any questions or comments so far? And I mean, you want me to pull these up and screen share, or you guys have access to the drawings?
Everybody does have a copy of those. I share those with packets, so.
Yeah, does everybody feel like they have, they've had a chance to, I mean, do they they feel like it would be helpful to put it up on the screen, or do you feel like you've gone through the documents and you're good where you're at? Board members?
I'm clear. I think the only thing I would like clarification again on what the variance is exactly.
Did you hear that, Justin? And we can get to the, we can get to our questions, you know, under consideration of action, but but if you guys are good with the documents you've got, unless there's anything else that during the public hearing portion that the presenters would like to share, you know, we can move on to consideration of action.
You know, the one last thing I'd like to point out is we've gotten signatures from both neighbors on either side of the property who are in favor of this project. We can explain to them what we're trying to do. As the current swimming pool exists, there is a very opaque tall fence around it, as well as a water slide that comes down. We would be eliminating both of those things so that in terms of view, it would be much improved from what it is right now. And then Doug, if you can speak to the two variants or non-conforming issues that, if you can explain that better than I can, that'd be awesome.
He can certainly do that during the consideration of action, because I'll be first up on that front. So unless there's anyone else here to speak on the public hearing portion, we'll close the public hearing and move to item number six, consideration of action by Tom and Mary Kay Zimbrick, 5011, Tony Watts the Trail, requesting variances from the Manona Municipal Code of Ordinances, section 480, 24D, 7C, for accessory building in the shore yard, and section 480, 24D, 7D, accessory building and structures lot coverage to increase the maximum lot coverage of accessory structures in order to build a seasonal removable pier and a permanent in-ground pool within the shore yard, case number Z-005-2022. So with that, Doug, I'll let you start.
Thank you. So I'll just kind of run through the the two variances that have been requested and just give a little bit of background as well for the board. So the first variance is the accessory structures or accessory building in the shore yard. So in the shore yard, the ordinance language includes both boathouses and piers. So the element here with that variance is the in-ground pool. Just a couple of months ago, there was a very similar request also came in on Antonio other. The other element here is the maximum lot coverage, and that is that the total of all accessory building structures within the, on any of the lots can be 1,000 square feet total. So with the boathouse here as design being 1,000 square feet, both the pool and the deck sort of additional to that. And that was just how I noticed it here with the agenda that, you know, it's not for the boathouse, but it was the other two elements effectively which take it above that 1,000 square feet. So that's sort of the reasoning behind this. The pier is listed within that subsection of the ordinance as well. So the three elements do apply to that 1,000 square feet. And so just as a way of procedure as well, the piers typically do require DNR approval as well, especially if they're going into the lake. And so that would of course be required, but there are still dimensional standards that the city maintains for peers setbacks, things like that, which this would comply with. It's just that area is the challenge. And so I did meet with the applicants and the design team on this and sort of spoke through the project, got a better understanding of what was proposed and had some of these conversations about what will be needed, fencing, covers, things like that, while just giving some background about, you know, what we've seen elsewhere across the city as well. So we had that, and then maybe a few weeks later, this various application came in, having, you know, taken on some of that advice. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. I actually have one question before I open it up to the board. Tom, first of all, on behalf of all of us in Manona, glad you found your forever home.
Thank you.
I too moved to Manona thinking, and in fact renovating a home, and certainly don't have, don't have any intention of leaving, so I'm very appreciative of that. And this is kind, my question is, I mean, I appreciate also the forward thinking that some of this may be needed depending on your health and the healthier family down the road. I guess I would just posit the question, and this really goes to Justin, I guess, as well as to you. You know, as a board and really as a city, and around this kind of statute, I mean, couldn't any, literally any resident of Manona come in front of this zoning board and say, my future, you know, I'm going to live here forever, and my future plans are to renovate my home to make it fully accessible, and so I need a variance? And I mean, I just, I just throw that out because there's, I mean, because that's all, as you have indicated, down the road, right? You're trying to anticipate your future. In that way, it just strikes me that that as a city potentially puts us in a bit of a bind, because, as I said, virtually any resident could come forward and say, A, this is my forever home, and obviously there's nothing that prevents you from selling, selling your home, and B, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to eventually renovate it to include, you know, and I need, so I need these accessible features.
If I could just make a quick point, it's actually not theory. I'm fortunate to have both my parents alive who are 95 and 91. My mother has Parkinson's, and she's been confined to a wheelchair for the last three years. So this would be not in the future, but an immediate need.
Okay, very helpful to know. Thank you.
That's exactly what I was going to say too, and I know you guys have friends too that are wheelchair bound, so yeah, for sure.
Yeah, just to comment on that, Nancy, I think it really depends on what the variance is, right? To accommodate accessibility, right? I can't, I can't say I need to build up to the road, right, so I can park my van to get the wheelchair out, right? Like that would be an obvious, obviously kind of abusing that reasoning. So the reasoning here, right, is, or the reasoning here is that wheelchair accessibility makes this boathouse need to be as large as you're proposing? Is that, is that how I understand it?
Yeah, the goal was for the boathouse to house, I mean, there was the first and foremost thing is they want a functional boathouse. They're going to have two boats. We also have the lift down to it. We want to be able to have a wheelchair inside of the boathouse and have, still have turning radiuses around in between the boats. So I guess that's a short answer for that.
I recall the previous approval that you mentioned, Doug, for a pool, a similar pool, right? It was a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
I think the discussion was the purpose of that setback is to maintain views, right? And so I think this, at least how I read it, this clearly aligns with that reasoning for this pool. That this does not obstruct any views, so there was, in fact, it's making views better, right? So it doesn't seem to me that this meets the purpose of the zoning restriction under necessary hardship.
For me, I want to hear more about what the hardship is, because the hardship has to be particular to the parcel of land and different from other parcels. I don't see anything from the documents provided, and maybe I can be illuminated, that is particularly, that is particular to this given property. And when I look at the unique physical property limitation, again, that has to be unique to the property, and items such as wanting to have a larger garage or similarly a larger boathouse are not legitimate factors in deciding to variance. And that's just under the ordinance and the, the relevant case law.
Okay, yeah, I understand that. I think that would go back to the, this, the site grading and sloping, particularly at the shoreline being quite steep. And so again, for us, having an enlarged boathouse with a lift would be important. But not only that, it's from the front of the house down to the back of the house, there's a quite a significant grade change as well, which is why we have an exposed basement. So there's, there's only a certain amount of area that we can work within, inside of the backyard, where the house footprint is and where the pool footprint is itself. And so again, I, you know, I remind everybody that the reason that we're pushing the pool further into the setback is because of the pinch points next to the house right now, in terms of safety with a wheelchair around it.
Well, I do appreciate that, and I do have, I have a question is whether or not the pool presently is a, any part of it is a existing non-conforming accessory building.
Yeah.
For Doug.
You're exactly right, Brad. It's already halfway non-conforming. So we're just, we're pushing it a little further into non-conforming.
And for the purposes of the slope, how does it impact the size of the need for a bigger?
Again, for us, it's including the lift within that footprint, and then also having a boathouse that's large enough for wheelchair accessibility inside of it.
Assuming that the pool was granted a variance, how big would the boathouse have to be to accommodate a wheelchair if it only fit one boat?
Um, I mean, I'm not sure. I'd have to look into that.
Ryan, are you close to, are you opposed to a question? It looked like you're about to.
I mean, yeah, I I think the question that's still outstanding right is for the variance of the square footage of accessory structures, you know, what is the unique physical property limitation that that, you know, creates the need for this variance, right? I don't think we've, I think that's the the question that I still want to ask you.
Nancy?
Yeah.
By how much are they exceeding the accessory maximum in this plan?
The boathouse is 1,000, so that would be code as is to both the pier and the pool. That would be additional to that, and I believe it was about 150 and 500. So about 650.
Square feet?
Yes.
And there's no other configuration of the pool that would reduce that amount?
The pool right now is is lengthwise with the shoreline. And it's, you know, in order to be a decent sized swimming pool, that's, that is the best configuration that we can come up with, that it's not being pushed even further into that setback. It's a simple rectangle. Right now, it's like a weird kidney shape that's again halfway into the the setback.
Right.
Right, I mean, with a 1,000 square foot boathouse, that's 1,000 square feet, right? So it wouldn't even, you wouldn't be able to have a pool at all without a variance, right?
Yeah, with, yeah, with the current design, exactly.
In case you all are wondering, this is a deliberative body, so I appreciate that the, that the board is, I can see their wheels turning, you know. I know, I always give them space to be thinking through what we need to think through as a board, right? To be consistent and appropriate to state statute, so. Any other questions or even a motion?
Could you describe a little bit more the state of the present pool? What kind of repairs are, what kind of repairs are needed? The odd, it's useful life?
Brad, it's really, it really comes down to the location of the pool. You know, it will, will need to be relined at least, but you know, I guess that's, to us, that's not the point. The point is to make it safe around the pool itself, so that's, that's why we're relocating it.
And the plan for the pool is to have it have a cover that meets the ordinance requirements, and there's no plans on a shed or any, any storage buildings, slides, diving boards, or the like?
Correct, yeah, there will be no structures above ground for the pool itself.
I think, I think for me, the the variance, right, I said this before, but the variance for shoreline setback is, I'm totally comfortable with that. I don't know how to justify the second variance. I would be, I would be, if this were a one a one boat boathouse, right, it would be clear. If accessibility required you to be over a thousand. You to be over a thousand square feet for a one boat boat house, I, I could, I could understand that.
Yeah, you know, again, for us, um, boat houses is a, is a major deal, and that's why we're before you. Um, for a variance, because it's really important to us that this um. That we have the space that we need in the, in the boat house itself. Um, if it makes any difference to you guys, I know, like technically I'm not supposed to. To give other examples of approved variances that, that have. Been similar to ours, but next door, uh, the neighbor to the south has a thousand square foot boat house. A huge swimming pool right on top of the bluff and um solid stone retaining walls all the way down, which is way more. Then, you know. Way more of a build out, I, I would say compared to what we're proposing here, so. Um, there's certainly a lot of examples of that um up and down a lake.
I guess with Ryan, I'm kind of struggling with the. I understand the need for the boat house and the size of the boat house. But you're maximizing what's allowed, and then you're asking us to approve a variance for a pool. Like for the entire pool, basically. Because it's up, it's within the line, so I'm kind of having a hard time justifying. Having both of them. I mean, I understand the pier, I understand the boat house, I understand. But if you have to bring the pool in, um, um, so if it's not exceeding the, um. The maximum, then I don't see why you. Yeah, I don't know, or hold off on the pool until the house is rebuilt, if those are the plans. Until you can build the house so that it is, um, allows for the wheelchair accessibility around the pool.
I'll also point out that the prior variance to the neighbor of the south was done in November of twenty sixteen. It was approved. By a totally different body and at least two city planners ago, uh, were involved with that process. And I, I don't think this, this body at least doesn't have like the familiarity with the ins and outs of that discussion. Uh, I did go back and review those notes and it was ju, it was for the pool at the time. There's no variance requested for that boat house.
Okay, I mean, just a reminder, we're not asking for variance for the boat house either. We're just, you know, a pool and a, and a pier would be the concerns.
No, okay, I mean, that clarifies it, but I mean, when I look at it, I mean, the boat houses is, is involved uh because of the. One thousand square foot maximum um accessory building limit. That's why it's, I think, part of the discussion.
For sure. I, I understand that.
Does it make a difference that, you know, so that it's really kind of improving the area, obviously, you know, proves the house? Cause right now it's a sixty year old pool that um it's in-ground cement. You know, could have leakage, cracks, I mean, sixty year old things, you know, they fall apart. And plus, the source of this pool heat, the single source, is a oil. Tanker within the current house, which is built specifically for this pool. So not only would we be taking out the pool, which will break, you know, leak, collapse, whatever. We're also taking out a standalone um oil, uh, you know, uh, big oil can heater. And getting rid of that as well as part of the overall design, so we're making it bigger, safer, and taking it out in an environmental concern, call it. Uh, because of the way this current pool is heated.
I, I do think that's relevant, um, and I appreciate you pointing that out, but I think that goes to the no harm to public interest factor. Uh, which is a separate factor that we have to consider and whether or not there's long-term cumulative impacts of the property. Um, I mean, I think there's no doubt that repairing and updating the pool to get rid of. Those types of issues, especially if there's leaks and things, um, has a long-term cumulative positive impact, and I think there's also the letters in support. Um, you know, go to the um, um, no harm to public interest factor. But I, I think where I'm still at is. What the unique physical property limitation is that would prevent, uh, you know, prevent the, the, the building design. And again, I go back down to like, well, if the, if the, if the, you know, if the boat house was, you know, half the size, we might be looking at a hundred and. You know, forty, hundred and fifty, um, you know, uh, variance, um, you know, versus a, you know, almost. Um, a, a five hundred and fifty, five hundred and forty, five hundred and fifty square foot variance, uh, and also the hardship, uh, you know, for me. How is it different from other parcels? Um, and it's still a property that's economically suitable for permitted purposes?
If I may just mention, uh, one other thing that I, I did clarify with uh applicants as, as well. Um, when I was looking at this for the, the elements that it maybe didn't comply with in the ordinance, one thing that I did check was the impervious for the, the site. Um, with the, uh, you know, proposed landscaping, the retaining walls and things that have been mentioned, and it will comply with that. So for lots of this size, uh, it's going to be thirty-five percent grid space effectively, uh, sixty-five percent impervious. Uh, and so it is going to comply with that, uh, even including things like pool and those elements. So I just, um, I should have mentioned that at the top of this, but just another piece for, for consideration.
And that would speak to the purpose of the zoning restriction, right?
Say that again, Ryan.
What you're pointing out, Doug, uh. That would speak to unnecessary hardship as the, as a reason for the uh variance under purpose of the zoning restriction, right?
To a degree, I, I would say.
Yeah.
But that's to the board to decide, but just, I, I wanted to clarify, um, but. That, you know, is, is something that I do calculate when I'm doing, you know, these things, so wanted to, to make sure that would not be the case, uh, that it would be running into issues with that.
We talked about a pool being a structure. I think, Justin, you mentioned that earlier. If, uh, maybe Doug, you can talk about that, how, how is a pool? How is a pool fitting into this zoning restriction?
So I, I think, uh, again, it would be inferring, uh, from how the ordinance was written and sort of the intent when it was written. But I think the, the understanding there, certainly in the shore yard, um, the permitted structures, uh, buildings, uh, piers. Boat shelters, uh, everything really related to, to the water, um, and, and nothing else. Uh, and that will include things like storage sheds and things as well that are prohibited. So, uh, I think previously we had discussed that, you know, maybe the intent here was the cross views. Uh, and so certainly with the, the previous application from this year, there was a condition attached to it that that, uh, there'd be no above-ground elements. Pool slide, boat house things, or um, pool house, sorry, things like that, uh, with it. Um, and I think that applicant will also be doing a, um, cover rather than offense. So, uh, I think that that was a little bit of discussion with that. The, the definition, I, I think it would still, again, it would be a future ordinance discussion, but I think it would still fall within the thousand square feet limits. However, it's defined, um, just from a sort of accumulation of, uh, structures and additional components to the house. Uh, I think the only way, and I did, I mentioned this in the, this um, initial discussion, was really in closing, it would be the only way. Uh, and that's something I do mention to, to central applicants, of course, that some sort of, you know, um, in no pool effectively would be the, the way to do this. Uh, as long as it didn't run into the meander line setback, but, um, obviously, that's very different element than an outdoor.
Is the um, the restriction for accessory structures, is that within the, the setback?
Uh, so it's within the shore yard, so the only way that this, and the shore yard is defined as anything beyond the house. Um, so the only way, uh, that this pool could be, um. Possible would be if it were in the side yard, effectively not extending beyond the, the house. Um, and the house, of course, would need to be fifty feet back from the meander line as well.
Or in the front yard.
Possibly.
Yeah, I mean, you know, my issue with the um, the code. Uh, it wasn't, I mean, it seemed like it was specific in saying that, um. The, uh, the maximum total lot covers was for accessory buildings. Um, there is no definition spelled out anywhere, um, in the ordinance that, that, um, that discusses what an accessory building is. So it's sort of open to interpretation. So I guess, you know, part of what I'm asking for here is interpretation as a swimming pool, which is, uh, certainly a structure, but it's completely below grade. Um, that that is not, uh, considered a building itself.
And I, I guess I, I can just address that, but, um, I did, you know, there, there have been, as mentioned, a couple of these types of requests, and I did. Uh, speak with the city attorney who has been the attorney for a number of years, uh, but just clarified his interpretation of this. Um, and sort of discussed that as well, the, the building structure, uh, and, and that is his, uh, definition, um, and his interpretation as, as well. So just verifying, um, you know, before bringing any of these forward, uh, that that was the case and that was the interpretation. And certainly, I've heard, you know, some feedback, uh, that that is potentially something to look into, you know, as, as, as a separate ordinance discussion. Uh, but as, as written, um, that is the city interpretation at this point.
So just to clarify, Doug, you're saying the attorney Cole's interpretation is that a pool is not considered an accessory structure?
No, that it is, that it counts, uh, yeah.
Thank you.
Is it an accessory building or accessory structure?
The two are used, uh, somewhat interchangeably in that, uh, in the single family section of the ordinance. Um, I believe there's a portion, the subheading is buildings and structures. Um, and so the pool itself is not defined, uh, that the shore yard itself, when it says, uh, what is permitted in them. It specifically lists each element with, with the pool being one of those.
But traditionally, you know, uh, drafting is read against the person who constructs it and has the most, um, limited interpretation as possible. So I'm not understanding this concept because it's construed against the person who drafted. And if they didn't draft it specifically to include pools, then it should revert back to a more limited purpose, at least that's how, um, documents are interpreted. So if it's not mentioned, then you fall back to more restricted definition.
And it, and I, I'm looking through my notes here, it does, um, it gets back to the building section as well, and there, there is sort of, you know, cross referencing that, that occurs. Um, I'm sorry that I don't have that specifically, um, in, in front of me, but, uh, that was the case, um, back with the twenty sixteen application that was mentioned. Um, for the pool and this has helped consistent throughout, um, with the read. And, and so I clarified it with, with the attorney, um, and like I said, I don't have his, his exact, uh, opinion, um, in, in front of me. But that, that was the read and sort of how each piece of the tree.
Doug, can you speak to how the, I guess, just how the thousand square feet came to be? Is there any data on how that was developed?
So it was, it was certainly before my time, um, you know, I, I think the intention of that is that these are deemed to be accessory. Uh, and that certainly, um, there are other portions in the city where, you know, the, the footprint of the house may be eight hundred square feet, you know, each floor, for example. Um, we do see eight hundred square feet garages coming in and things like that, 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 that becomes a point maybe where, when is it, is it, um. Uprooting the, the primary use, I guess, is the, the intent there. So it's to regulate, um, you know, typically a probably five hundred square foot two-car garage, something like that. Uh, it still gives you some room there for a storage shed and things, but, uh, this is where, you know, with the boat house and with the other elements. This is typically where it becomes more challenging, but there are a couple instances where I've seen elsewhere, but, um, it is really when it's, um, a boat house. Certainly, you know, the, the size that anything else runs into that challenge, but, uh, it's, it's been the case for a long time. Um, and that's, um, I don't know, sort of the intent as, as twenty-three.
Yeah, I mean, when, so when, when we started this project, um, you know, we've, we've been very intentional about how we've approached the design and the layout of structures and where things are placed. Certainly, the accessibility and usability of these spaces and the connection to the house and the boat house and the lake is very important. Um, we've also put a great emphasis on, you know, the usability of getting down to the lake. And then just being as thoughtful as we can about how we're addressing, you know, the shoreline, and if we look at the shoreline right now. It's basically an overgrown shoreline with invasive vegetation. There's a lot of sort of riprap rubble on the shoreline. You know, we've engaged a landscape architect, a civil engineer to come up with the shoreline design that we think is, is going to be very sustainable from the shoreline, from structural standpoint. Uh, as well as an aesthetic enhancement to what it is now. And I, I guess the question I'm getting to is, while the boat house is a thousand square feet right now, even if it was reduced to five thousand square feet. Beyond just meeting that ordinance amount of a thousand square feet. Which seems like it should be looked at from a project by project basis. You know, I think we've, we've done our best to make this a well-thought-out design that's very static, fits in with the landscape. Um, it's, it's low impact, basically, you know, it blends in with the hillside. I guess beyond. Some number that to me feels a little bit like it's, you know, we're going to set this at a thousand square feet, not knowing the project, how big the lot is. I'm, I'm just not sure what, you know. From a static standpoint and how this is designed. You know, I think we've, we've done our due diligence and we've gone above and beyond to make this fit well with the landscape. So to go to a, a one-stall boat house, I guess, from that standpoint, I don't know that it's really decreasing our impact on, on what we're doing. If that makes sense.
Right, so, well, let me, let me just, I guess, uh, say again that, um. This isn't about, I mean, I have no doubt that whatever's created will be beautiful, right? You can tell from the designs you've already given us. Uh, that, that what you've created, you know, is quite lovely. I have no doubt that it will increase the value of the property, that it'll be an asset to the neighbors on either side of the property, but that's not what this board rules on. And and, you know, we were bound by, I mean, what, as as the members have pointed out, where we're stuck is the unique physical property limitations. And it within that statute, I mean, that's a state statute, that's not ours, we didn't create that, it's not our ordinance, that's that's what's spelled out. And within that, it very specifically says, you know, the circumstances of the applicants, you know, such as a growing family, elderly parents or desire for a larger garage or pool or boathouse, one might add, you know, are not legitimate factors, right? It goes back to what Brad was saying earlier in terms of, this is not about the size of the structures as much as in that, in this instance, that statute specifically relates to the property, the unique, you know, not the uniqueness of what the design is, but the unique limitations of the property. And I think that's where the group seems to be stuck.
I guess, you know, to that point, one other thing I'm going to point out to you guys, I know that Doug has alerted us to the other issue involving when we're, when we're rebuilding the house. There's a limited amount of grade that we can affect up or down or filling in or taking out. Again, in order to make this cool conform, which would be bringing it out of that setback, we would effectively have to push the house forward by quite a lot. And with the configuration of what the house is basically being that it's an exposed lower level. And then on the front side of the house, there's a steep slope from the house back down to the road. From my standpoint, we do have quite a significant issue with the the site conditions themselves. And again, going back to the slope issue.
But we're not looking at that right now. I mean, we don't, what's before us, we can't consider what the the slope changes might be when you're.
Like, it could be that there's nowhere else for the pool to go, right, because of the fact of limitations.
Yep. I mean, if this were easy, we wouldn't be here, guys. And that's bottom line. We've done our best to make this work and we've balanced something, a lot of different issues here. And I think we're doing a great job with 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 those issues. So we're just trying to to have, you know, at the end of the day, a beautiful project that's functional for the Zimbriks. And again, we're hoping that you guys can maybe look at the interpretation of the pool as a building, which again, we don't think is fair. And and think about the reasons that this this ordinance exists in terms of, you know, if we're really affecting anything with what we're doing here. And, you know, John makes a great point. We're not affecting sight lines in any way. Everything that we're proposing is at or below the bluff level. So I guess at that, at that point, I don't know what else I can, I can tell you guys, but.
I do think, I mean, the 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 slope is compelling, right? You're saying that there's nowhere else for this pool to go. Because our alternative would be that the pool would have to go, you know, before the shore setback. And you're saying that that even there's, there's, it's not feasible for that to happen. Andy or Brad, do you have any others?
You know.
Is that?
Brad?
Oh, to me?
Yeah.
Sorry, I was just looking up the setback and other requirements for pools in which it specifically says in one seventy five dash two five sub two concerning setback requirements and treats it as an accessory building, you know, as to statutory construction. So it does reference accessory buildings as opposed to structures in that in that section. Just to go to the cross reference. And I mean, I agree with the chair and the points that I've already made. You know, the you know, it's it's my understanding that that the pool is included in the thousand square foot limitation. I recall the the prior the prior meeting for the the recent pool. I believe I'm the one that raised the amendment for no above ground structures with that pool. To make that amendment. But I I treat every single property as unique. And I don't think we said any precedent in this board and take each applicant as we find them. For me, I'm still struggling both with hardship and unique physical property limitation.
And Brad, so the the project that you're referencing, was that approved? For variance?
It it was ultimately.
Can you explain why that was or what what were the conditions that it was approved with?
I'm not going to speak for my fellow, my fellow board members. For me, I made the, I made the amendment, reading the room to make sure that there was no above ground structures. And then I forgot that I could vote against my own amendment.
Yes, I'll just say that, I mean, it looks gorgeous, the plans look amazing. And if they come together, you're going to have a beautiful house. And and it doesn't look like you're building up a tier or anything to propose the new pool. Am I right?
Yeah, the pool would be at grade the way it is right now.
It's just, it's getting at that. I mean, unfortunately, residents aren't under ADA compliance laws, and we can't really use that as a whether it makes sense or not, as a reason for unnecessary hardship as far as pushing the pool back out, unless you have another reason that the pool can't be. I don't know, I'm kind of looking at it like it could almost be put in the same footprint. It's not what you'd really like, but you know, I'm trying to find the hardship that causes the pool to be considered almost completely beyond the maximum. I mean, it.
I mean, yeah, you know, whether you want to consider ADA hardship, it is to us, it is to our specific project. So that's, again, that's why we're, we're in front of of you guys, because to us, this is a big deal. And and we, we would like it resolved in a way that would be advantageous for our project to move forward. So I understand you have certain frameworks to work within, but so do we.
I don't want to put words in in Beth's mouth, but I think what she's saying is that if we if we did use the the ADA, which is effectively what you've articulated to us as the the reason behind this full change as as the you sort of unique or at least, you know, the hardship involved, then there would be all other, potentially other elements that would need to be there to also meet ADA standards. So it it kind of leaves us not being able to use that because there would probably be other things like a fence around the pool or other elements in order to to meet that standard. And that's not, that's not what's being asked.
It will be meeting all of those standards. It will be a hundred percent ADA when we're done with the project.
Right, right, but but we're not being, but again, what we're dealing with is what's in front of us. And and we're just struggling, obviously, with, as as members have articulated with, you know, the property limitations and the hardship question. So it's really two elements. Are we close, board?
This is one more question, is 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 it a hardship consideration if you have to substantially change the layout, push the house back, et cetera? Because we have two neighbors on both sides, because basically, we're using the same grade all the way up to the house, but the grain changes to make it a lot more flat to get to the water. So my concern is that any other considerations would have a lot more disturbances to the property and would affect our neighbors more. Right now, there's no impact on our neighbors whatsoever under the design that Justin and John have come up with. So the other, the other options, I don't think are necessarily better for not only us, but for our neighbors. And would that be a hardship because it impacts our neighbors, other, you know, alternatives?
Public interest, but we have to consider what's unique to your property, not your neighbors.
Doug, just clarification, the interpretation of your city attorney, was that for buildings, looking at the pool only or the pool and pier language?
It was specifically for the pool and the the definition or the categorization of the pool.
So the pier was, you did not opine as to the pier in this case?
No, although the the pier is part of the accessory structures subsection in that it's listed that it is a permitted use in the shore yard. And then subsequent to that is the subsection with the thousand square feet maximum, so that within the same subsection.
Board members, I think we need some sort of a motion.
I'm going to motion to deny finding no unique physical property limitation or hardship.
Hey, do I have a second? Beth, Ryan, no seconds, is that where I'm?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Could I get, could I request from from staff a little bit more detail in in the motion, if I may please?
Absolutely.
The limitations and the hardship, just if if the maker of the motion could just elaborate a little more, that'd be great.
Absolutely, Brad?
Yes, yes, I I should. I mean, as I've stated previously, I don't find that there's unique physical property limitation as described by the applicant. And and I don't find that a hardship exists that prevents this zoning parcel, makes this zoning parcel different for that from other other parcels. It's still economically suitable for a permitted purpose. That would accommodate a reasonable design for for permitted use if all yard and setback requirements were observed.
Doug, do you have what you need?
I do, thanks.
Five emotions, seconds, barring further discussion. Any other discussion before we vote? All those in favor of the mention, say aye.
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 Opposed? Sorry, Ryan, you're freezing up on my screen, so I can't see, I can't, I can't tell whether you.
I I said aye.
You said aye, okay, great. No, the motion carries. You got that, Doug?
And that, that was for both, for both variants elements. I should have clarified that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Justin. Thank you, Tom. Okay, we're going to move on to item number seven, public hearing by Emily and James Farwell at forty eight oh eight Shore Acres Road are requesting a variance from anonymous court of ordinances, section four eighty twenty four D four A. Street yard setbacks for the purpose of building a new addition to the east side of their property. Case number Z dash zero zero six dash two zero two two. Welcome, Emily and James, thank you for your, for your patience.
Yep, no problem.
Go right ahead.
I was just going to introduce myself because Nancy, you were talking before about Manona being your forever home. I grew up in Manona, born and raised, left for college and came back. So and then my husband is from Cottage Grove, we brought him over to Manona, but we both went to MG schools, so.
We lived there for fifteen years, roughly, in this forty eight oh eight Shore Acres.
Yeah.
So the variance we're looking at hopefully is way more straightforward. That was a little overwhelming to listen to it. I was like, whoa, so now my brain's a little scattered, but I think, I think we'll be all right. Um, so if you had a chance to look at the drawing that we have of our house in the flat, we live in just a small, like backwards L shaped ranch on a corner of Lamboli and Shore Acres. And along with our small house, we have a super small garage in a super small driveway. Currently, along Lamboli, our garage, breezeway and kitchen are all existing non compliant. So what we have is our structure right now is not compliant. In the realm of like buying our house fifteen years ago in a growing family and all the stuff that comes along with a growing family. Our kids often like to play basketball and hockey in the driveway and ride bikes, which leads us to moving cars out on the road. One of our hardships that we think of all the time with little kids, our daughter just turned six and our son will be nine at the end of August. We have to park our cars right next to our driveway on our street, which terrifies me as a parent, because we all know that balls and hockey pucks roll in the driveway or roll out in the street all the time. So the idea of having a two car garage. So the idea of having a two-car garage really helps us with the hardship of the safety of our kids and our family. Couple, I think I put it in here, six years ago, my car was totaled in front of our house when it was parked on the street. So that's like very real in my head. A car is replaceable, kids aren't. So when we park our cars on the driveway, so that, or on the road on Lamboli, so the kids can play in the driveway, there's total loss of sight for our kids, not only crossing the street, but as well as drivers that go by with church traffic, because we're on the backside of IHM and the school traffic every day. So I think that's our number one hardship that makes us go, oh, if we had a two-car garage, that would eliminate that piece, which is a real concern all the time when our kids are playing outside. So we've been working with Jim Lampy, and he can't be here tonight. He's presenting at a meeting for the Builders Association, but if we need anything, we can call him. But in talking to him about this two-car garage, we realized that our existing dwelling is non-con, non, what is it, non-conforming? And so we went, oh, so I included his drawing, I think it's the very last page of your packet. If we were to move the additional, I'll call it, to comply with the variance, it would be smack dab in the middle of our backyard, and our yard is not big. And also in that process, it would cover up at least one or two of the windows in our daughter's bedroom, which would make our house by code, a two-bedroom house instead of three. So to trade a two-car garage, to gain a two-car garage and lose a bedroom seems like a no-go. I mean, that's just common sense. And then he drew it where we'd like make a big jut in, where we'd be losing living space as well. So essentially, what we want to do, if we get the variance approved, is we would actually push our two-car garage closer to our lot line of our neighbors on Lamboli, which is easily within a seven-foot variance. I mean, that's, that's not a problem. It's just that where garage and breezeway currently are is non-compliant. So we essentially want to keep that same line and it lines up with our kitchen. So it's not just like breezeway garage, it's also our kitchen and living space. So, um, let's see. And I know you guys have already read this, so I'm just kind of trying to go through it. And it's kind of a domino effect, so if we can push, build the garage currently as close as it is to the road with that 17-foot setback, it just allows a lot of additional space where we can really upgrade our outdated home. I think we bought it from the original owners and it was built in 1952. So it lived up to 1952 standards. We have a small kitchen that a kitchen table barely fits in for our family of four. So it would increase living space as well as the two-car garage. And not piggybacking on what the group of our son, but we both have elderly families as well, who have limited mobility. Both entrances in our home, you need to go up at least five steps. Our house, for some weird reason, is set up really high on our property, which is great when it rains, we never worry about it. But like just through the planning of all this, we're like, oh, this makes sense, this makes sense. So it gets rid of some of the hardships that we currently have. Another hardship, our daughter has a small nine-by-nine bedroom. She thinks it's cool now, in a couple of years, she's probably not going to be real pleased that she has a small bedroom in the house. And essentially, like right now, the breezeway, which connects the garage and our kitchen is deteriorating. It was built not well. It has like single one-pane windows, just real thin, what would you even call that?
Yeah, the foundation or floor of it is sunken in, not level.
Yeah, there's at least an inch and a half difference.
The garage, the garage has cracked foundation. It's hard navigating, getting in, you have to go up steps on the outside and then get in the breezeway and then a couple more steps up into the house and then through the garage as well.
There's a lot of doors, there's a whole lot of doors to get into our house. And predominantly, we enter our house and only use the entrance along Lamboli. We really don't.
Where our driveway is.
Yeah, because we don't park at our driveway and then walk around to the front, which is at Shore Acres. So it's one of those goofy corner lots where there are challenges to it.
Got it. Okay, anything else? Right, well.
Do you guys have any questions for us?
Oh yeah, well, that would be the next section.
Okay.
So let's close the public hearing. And we'll move to the next section, which is consideration of action. Emily and James Farwell at 4808 Shore Acres Road, requesting a variance from the anonymous court of ordinances, section 480 24D for a street yard setbacks for the purpose of building a new addition to the east side of the property, case number Z 006 dash 2022. Doug?
Yes. Really just kind of running through the designing here, the fact that it is a corner lot. Any, as a reminder, every portion of the yard that faces the street is going to be termed a street yard. So the applicants here have the 30-foot, 3-0-foot setback on both Shore Acres and Lamboli. And then the, a railyard is not defined if there are two street yards. So the two portion of the lot effectively are both termed side yards, so it's seven feet setbacks to those. So as mentioned, the proposed plan would meet the side yard setbacks to the neighborhood on the east along Lamboli. But the request here is really to encroach on the street yard setbacks along Lamboli to extend and maintain the, the building line just to the east. That's it for me.
Thank you. With that, I'll open it up to the board for questions, comments.
I'm actually on your, I'll call it sister property on the other side of Lamboli and Schofield, I'm on that corner. So I know, I know your house and your. Walk by there a lot.
We know, we know right where you are then.
I had a question for Doug. Is the width of, the width of the property on Shore Acres, I see that it's 75 feet. Is that especially narrow?
I wouldn't say so, I would say anywhere, you can see as narrow as sort of 45 in width. If we're, if we're deeming, you know, width, what's the front, what's the side here, you know, the length and the width. But 75 by 126, I would say is particularly unique. Certainly, of sorts of blocks in this area of the city. It's probably more the corner and the orientation of the building, rather than the dimensions itself.
I guess this seems fairly clear to me. I feel like the orientation of the house and the fact that it's a corner lot and you're already within, you're already a non-conforming structure. There's no other place to put, to put the structure. I think in terms of, you know, cumulative effects on the neighborhood, this is clearly a positive.
They're all out of town and one has COVID, otherwise they all wanted to come. We try to rest.
You know, under, under unique physical property limitations, right? The statute does specifically say, you know, a larger garage is not a, or desire for larger garage is not a physical property limitation, but in this case, it seems that the livability of the house and, you know, the ability to have a reasonable sized house, right? A reasonable sized structure.
It's not just the garage, it's also, the house is expanding. It just happens to be the garage is the one that's kind of.
Well. It kind of dominoed from the garage, to be completely honest. And with our one-car garage and our one-car driveway, I forgot to mention speaking, but it was, but it was in the letter that I wrote to you guys. We do have a fire hydrant on the corner as well. So like literally when we park our cars on the road, there's one on each side of the driveway. So, and we have to, because if we would do two, we would be too close to the fire hydrant. So there's all sorts of like weird quirky things. So it was originally the garage that we were like, this would be ideal for everybody. Gets rid of a bunch of those hardships, but then we said, as long as we're spending money to have a house with a few extra hundred square feet would be fantastic. And, you know, so we kind of worked through the plan with Jim Lampy about things that would work better for our family as well. But then we slammed on the brakes when we realized that, whoa, if this is too close to the road and the variance doesn't get approved, like this is just going to be a no-go for us. And we'll have to come up with something, probably move, which we really don't want to do, because we love our neighborhood and we love being in Manona.
For that, I was trying to kind of circumvent that whole garage isn't a necessarily a, create a hardship, because you want a bigger garage? You want an adequate-sized house to fit a normal family.
All that, but like just parking our cars on the street with the safety of our kids is a huge hardship. So what, what, what eliminates that? Having a place to park two cars? So I appreciate you asking that way.
My biggest question, really I missed it, I think Doug might have been touching on it, and I might, I might have missed it. Is this, is the, is the building envelope unusual for this type of a lot?
In terms of where, where any, anything could be built, I guess, is, is that the question, Brett?
Yes, that's the question.
Yeah, so I'd say this is somewhat typical for a corner lot. From, to Ryan's point about the dimensions and the shape of the lot, I'd say here, the challenge comes a little bit more with the orientation and the fact that if you were sort of putting the setbacks here, the buildable area is the southeast corner, which is the backyard. And so I think as, as the applicant had mentioned, that to comply here would involve, you know, pushing it 10-plus feet back into the backyard. I'd say if you were to just erase the house and sort of from this, this plan, the lot isn't all that unique for a corner, but probably the orientation, the layout may be, you know, a little bit more unique.
That's helpful, thank you. Because, you know, again, and we've, we've said it repeatedly, a need, a desire for a large garage, growing family, elderly parents aren't factors that we are supposed to consider, so.
I think in my mind, you know, it, I don't know if this has anything to do with the statute, but it doesn't go out any further than it is right now. The sign, the sightlines are exactly the same. And if, and if we had to do a plan of it, force us again to put it in the backyard, so it, we're kind of, our hands are tied, essentially, we can't do anything unless we get the variance.
Other than leave everything currently as it is and.
Right, it's just.
Now, there's, there's a lot of things working against us.
Does this property predate the zoning ordinance? Do we know?
I would say so.
1952, pretty sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to guess, but I didn't want to assume.
I would guess so.
I will say, it does tick a box of reasonable design and permitted use for me. It does, it does tick those boxes, I just want to throw that out there for the board.
Any other questions, Ryan, Beth, Brad? Comments?
Is there anything other than the orientation that is that, that creates either a, either a, that is unique to the property? That creates a limitation or a hardship?
The current distance of the garage to the street, right?
Well, and like the goofy, the goofy thing is we're just working against where our garage and kitchen currently are. Like how our house was built, like we can't, we can't push that back. So like our, our garage, or no, I'm sorry, our kitchen, that's always going to be where it is no matter what. Our new living space that we will add, like even if we, let's just get the word garage out, because I know that's an iffy. If we add to our new living space, it's currently lining up with what we have. It's not moving forward, like that's, that's where we're sitting, is that. It's just going to line up with the current, the current footprint on that front line, which is, which is the goofy part, because we can go closer to our neighbors. That's fine, that's within the limitations, but where it currently sits is the problem. And I think that in, of itself is the hardship, is where it was built and how it's set on the lot.
Yeah, that's, that happens to be where our garage is currently, it's not on Shore Acres, so. There's all, what we did around.
Do I have a motion, or do I have any other comments or questions?
How many bedrooms do you have right now?
Technically, we have three, two and a really, two and a really small one. The third one is a nine-by-nine.
And if the garage is moved back to meet the 30-foot setback?
Yes.
Then you would only have, your house would technically be a two-bedroom?
Yep, yep, and we have two kids, a boy and a girl. That would not do justice to anyone.
So by complying, you essentially reduce.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to attempt a motion. Bear, bear with me. I, I think that, I think a hardship exists because the property is created before the passage of the zoning ordinance. uh, because the, the property is created before the passage of the zoning ordinance, and while it could accommodate a structure, um, I, I think it would harm the public interest in, in essentially reducing the bedroom size of the house. I also think there's a, an additional unnecessary hardship. Uh, because if the house is pushed back, um, it would create a, uh, security hardship, which isn't, it is not in itself grounds, but it is a factor we can consider. Um, and I think the long-term and short-term cumulative effects of getting rid of a bedroom for a house is not necessarily positive. So, so I think, you know, that option is probably less than ideal, and I think the unique physical property limitation, uh, i- in this instance, is the orientation, is the orientation of the structure, of the orientation of the house. So for those reasons, I would move to approve.
Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a second from Ryan. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, yeah. Do you need us for anything else?
If I don't have anything else, I'll be in touch.
Okay, okay.
Right. Uh, Doug? Upcoming meeting?
Yes, uh, I did receive, um, just yesterday, in fact, a, an application, uh, another application, so, um, possibly the August eighteenth, um, I need to double-check my schedule. Uh, I'm not sure if we'll be available that date, but if not that date, I will be reaching out, um, to see if we can schedule something alternative. And I'll, I'll be checking that against your schedule as well, that's. See how.
I would be here, uh, I would be there, I should say, um, on the eighteenth of August. I will usually not be accessible on the fifteenth of September, just looking ahead, just so you know, um, I would not be available for that, because I will be across the pond, working.
Great. I'll make a note, thank you.
Updates on diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging?
Nothing from staff.
Okay, um, just as an FYI for those folks that may not know, we uh, you know, the, the, um, city's ad hoc committee on diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging just, uh, returned a report to the city uh, of recommendations after meeting for more than six months. Uh, uh, series of recommendations, I believe the report's about forty-three pages long, but there is an executive summary of recommendations to the city. Um, and, um, there's already been one public forum, which was very well-attended at City Hall. Uh, to discuss that report and the, and the city's next steps, um, likely next steps, uh, around um, around those recommendations, and if you haven't had a chance to read it yet, I would encourage people to do so. Uh, anything on sustainability?
Nothing for me.
I don't believe I have anything either. Any questions or, um, from, uh, of, of the staff from the board?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Also move.
I have a, a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, we are adjourned.
Thanks.